Have a roll call, please.
Councilman Lee.
Zooming.
Councilmember Pappen.
Zooming too.
Councilmember Aliva.
I'm a zoomer.
Vice Mayor Snyder. Vice Mayor Snyder. I could see that she's on, so maybe give her a moment. Vice Mayor Snyder.
I think you could assume she's on.
Yeah, but can she hear us? Yeah, I don't think she could hear us.
Vice Mayor Snyder, maybe you can call in to use your phone as well as a supplement.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
You text her?
I don't have.
I will give her a call.
Okay, we'll come back. Mayor Holliver.
Present.
Tom, are you reaching out to Anne?
I am. The other thing is you can just use your telephone.
Did somebody email her the phone number?
It's also on the. My contract.
It's on the notice of meeting.
Tom, can she hear us?
Not yet, council member. She's gonna try logging out and then logging back in to see if that makes a difference. She said sometimes that helps.
That might help.
In the meantime, City Manager Williams, perhaps you can give an update on the Central County Fire Department response to the local wildfires in the region?
Yes. Hold on for just a minute. She's calling me back. Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so maybe if you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
There we go.
All right, Vice Mayor Snyder. We're doing roll call. Thank you.
Was here, just wasn't verbal.
Okay, so the all council members are present. Thank you.
Okay, and City Manager Williams, if you can give a brief update on the wildfire response before we begin on the main agenda? Tom?
He needs to unmute.
He's muted, Mayor.
Got it, sorry. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, staff and public. Welcome. In terms of an update of the San Mateo Santa Cruz fires, known as the CZU Lightning Complex fires, the start date was August 16th. As I think everyone knows, the cause of the fire was lightning and its various locations across San Mateo and Santa Cruz County. Today, Cal Fire, Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office, San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, the Office of Bureau of Land Management, the Felton Fire Protection District, Santa Cruz County Fire Department, San Mateo County Fire Department, Creek Fire Department, Ben Lomond Fire District, and our CCFD, Central County Fire, are all very active on the front lines of fighting the fire. Currently, seven over close to 79,000 acres have been burnt. It's approximately 17% contained. There's been one civilian fatality. There have been no fatalities or injuries of the personnel fighting the fires. There were 246 residences that have been destroyed, close to 25,000 structures that have been threatened. And about 30 units, residential units were damaged but not destroyed. There were some other structures, you know, as you can imagine out in a remote rural area. That's approximately about 100 additional structures. The firefighters continue to work aggressively throughout the night, 24 hours a day. They've been taking advantage of the higher humidities and lower temperatures over the last several days. The fire, as I say, continues to burn in Southern San Mateo County and Northern Santa Cruz County. And they burn above the marine layer in the heavy timber and thick undergrowth, so very difficult conditions. The evacuation warnings have been issued for, as you know, parts of Santa Clara County, so it's stretched into Santa Clara County on the east side, in the Saratoga area. And approximately 77,000 people have been evacuated so far. The rotating crews here locally with Central County Fire Department, we have an active battalion chief and three actually engine companies, which are five personnel each, so a total of 15 plus a battalion chief that have rotated through throughout the process of fighting this fire. So that's a brief report. Mr. Mayor, do we have any answer any questions you may have?
Okay, please don't tell me I've gone mute.
We hear you.
Oh, okay. Was I being called? I couldn't tell.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on mute. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Snyder.
I just want to say, thank you. Thank you to our firefighters. Thank you to a group of people in Millbrae who've offered up their homes for fostering animals that hasn't been needed yet. And a big shout out to the Cow Palace in Daly City for, I think, hosting over 1,100 or 1,700 large animals up there. You know, it's really lovely when it's a team effort like that. And today I happened to go to Pete's to buy coffee and they are collecting, if you want to donate to bring coffee to firefighters, having done logistics for the Red Cross during an event like this, the amount of coffee that is drunk and food that are brought to first responders and all the volunteers is really great. And at least at Pete's you can donate. I'm sure there are other avenues. City Manager, if we could get that on our website, that's a lot of people to feed and keep hydrated. But thank you to all of our first responders and to our citizens for stepping up.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Aliva?
Yeah, City Manager, Tom, where, how can we help? Is there anything specific that we could, other, like checks, what do we need to do to help all those guys that are out there and girls that are out there fighting? You're on mute.
Let me, let me check with Chief Baron and I will get back to you and the rest of the council. We've been in contact and I have offered in if there's any need for, you know, food or water or additional resources to deliver to to the firefighters and personnel to let me know. But let me reach out to them and I'll get back to you.
Sorry to interrupt. Typically, the best way, the Red Cross feeds everybody, including our first responders. It could be different this fire, but City Manager, check on that.
Yeah, like I said, I'll ask the chief, Chief Baron.
Okay, thank you very much for that update. And now we will move on to our main agenda item tonight. This is the resolution awarding a design build contract to block construction for the Millbrae Recreation Center Restoration Project and approving the project labor agreement. So can we have the presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone see my screen okay, the cover page? So I want to start out here. I received a text from my wife about 10 minutes ago. She says, hi, why don't we go for a walk if you get home soon? Air is nice and clear and I'd love a little bit of exercise. And I responded to her and said, I have a council meeting this evening, approval of the Millbrae Recreation Center. And I bring that up because I'm so proud to introduce this project this evening, extremely excited to present and recommend what I think is a major milestone for the city, and that's the Millbrae Recreation Center. You know, over the last four years and certainly over the last 10 months, the City Council, the Recreation Subcommittee, and our project team have worked extremely hard to get to where we are this evening. And I'd like to thank the entire team across the board for the tireless effort and work that has gone into making this recreation center a reality for the Millbrae community. So I'm just thrilled to be able to present this to you this evening. And of course, a lot of technical difficulties. Try it again. Okay, so the agenda this evening, we'll go through a little bit of background. The recommendation for the City Council action this evening, the request for proposal process, it's election process that John Baker from Swinerton will be providing the lion's share of the presentation. The best value offered process, which is part of the state law for design build project, our schedule, discussion of the project labor agreement and the financing. I also have on here a little quote from Aristotle that I think was appropriate. We should be able not only to work well, but to use leisure as well. And this quote from Aristotle kind of struck me that, you know, when I think about this, and as I mentioned how important this is for the community, that every member of this community, whether they're young, before school, they're in school, they're high school students after school, certainly our senior community and families, they all use and cherish the Recreation Center. And the leisure that this, that this project will provide this community and the quality of life, I think is extremely important. And I, and I thought that that was just a great quote to kind of set the tone this evening. So in terms of background, as we all know, in July of 2016, there was a fire that destroyed the Recreation Center. The city worked quickly to move forward with a temporary community center here that's just on the west side of the main city hall complex. There was completion of the master plan and the rebuilding implementation plan. Then we went out for a bond two years ago, Measure II. That was a $12 million bond. If you recall, 62% of the voters favored the bond issue and 38% of the voters said no. And unfortunately, the way our taxes and works in California, we needed 66% of the voters to say yes for the, for the GO bond. But what that showed us is that, boy, we've got 62% plus of the community that's highly supportive of the Recreation Center. So moving forward with Group Four, construction costs and delays continue to escalate. We shifted gears and went to the design build process, hired Swinerton to help us through that process, as I said, over the last nine or 10 months. To rethink the project and deliver the project within our means, you know, on budget and within the schedule that was always originally desired by the City Council in 2022. So tonight, our recommendation, and we have a slide at the end of the presentation, is to award a design build contract of block construction and ELS architecture for the amount of $24,500,000 for the Recreation Center project. And authorize the City Manager to execute the contract and all of the contract change orders up to the contingency amount of $1,470,000. Also approve the use of the project labor agreement and approve the stipend of the proposers not selected for the project. That's $200,000. Now, the nice thing about the design build is that money does not go to waste. There, there are elements of the product that we've paid for that we're actually using in this final product. So if there are no questions, I'd like to now hand it over to Mr. John Baker from Swinerton to take the City Council to the lion's share of the process.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
You can, John.
You can, thank you. Just want to make sure. Well, so good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. This is quite a milestone in our process and I'm just honored to be able to present this tonight and assist in putting this forth to council. So to give a quick overview of our process, the statute which authorizes cities and counties to utilize design build as a two-step process, we go through a qualifications process of pre-qualified on design build teams, and we shortlisted pre-qualified three teams. And then those three teams receive the request for proposals. Again, this is stipulated sum, which is a fixed contract price of $24.5 million. I want to point out that includes all design, construction, permit fees. It really includes everything. The only changes that you can have in a done build contract are unforeseen site conditions and then any additional scope that the city would add. So it's really an excellent risk management strategy for procuring for cities to procure construction. As you recall, I believe that the, in past council reports, the schematic design, which is approved by council last fall, which was a design that the council did like was, however, it was over $3 million over the schematic design budget. So what we did is we prepared the RFP to challenge our design bill teams within a framework of acceptable changes to get to that $24.5 million number and basically realize the savings to the total project cost. And so what we did is we gave them these opportunities for innovation, which were really just some thoughtful ideas that actually made the, in the opinion of the Subcommittee and staff, a better project. And we'll go over some of those things as we go through the presentation. Some additive alternates. So we did ask them with things that they, that they could not quite fit in the $24.5 million fee, the contract sum, that what their strategy was for things, if you had to leave some things out, what would you do? And so these are small amount of items, but we'll go over those. Their enhancements, and those are items that they could fit in at no extra cost into the stipulated sum, and we'll review that. We then went through an interview process. We did a consensus ranking with the Subcommittee and the city staff based on best value. Now, best value per the statute is the, is written, the proposal which provides best value to the city of Millbrae. So best value design build is the, the process that the statute outlines for cities, and it's, it's been a great process that we've been lucky to use on it for a number of of public agencies, most notably the San Mateo Community College District, where we've, we've done about almost, I think nearly over a billion dollars of design build to provide best value to the voters of San Mateo County. We did have an RFI process. It was quite a process we went through where we clarified some final aspects of the of the proposals. At the end, the highest ranked firm was block construction with ELS architects. Next. There you go. So this is a summary of the best value process. And these items here are the changes that the, these are the block proposal made, which we allowed them to make in the framework of the proposal that actually allowed them to give us the best proposal for the price. I'll go through this really quickly, just a few of these. They actually felt that by doing a seal the south parking lot rather than replacing it, they could, they could would provide better value than, than doing a new parking lot. They have an enhanced arrival court. They gave us more, less concrete and more planting, which was greatly appreciated by the Subcommittee. They removed less trees and retained more of the, of the existing trees, which I think people really enjoyed. And also did some other site things, widening entrance pass to the preschool, which we'll show you in a minute. But these are all features of their project or, and are their response to the RFP where they really were able to give us an excellent proposal. Next. There you go. Continue this list. The place where this team shown above the rest that really, really generated, really, really added to their, their scoring was their structural system. They gave us a mat foundation system, which is fully allowable within the GTRC report, and I want to point out is fully code compliant with the highest seismic standards in, that we have in Zone Four, which is the size of zone that Millbrae is in. But more, so that actually was a, was a big savings over the spread footing with piers and schematic design. That saved about a million dollars, just that, and that stuff that's in the ground. So that was a really great design feature of, of the RP and the proposal. The building structure itself is a highly innovated system, which is really state of the art and kind of a cutting edge system, which is called CLT, or cross laminated timber with steel frame system. What this is, is these are cross laminated wood panels. It's highly sustainable. And then a steel frame system, which is recycled steel. So not only is it a highly sustainable structural system, it also will provide every ceiling in every room in the building with a couple exceptions of like kitchens, et cetera, with a wood, with a natural wood ceiling. And it really is something that it creates a quick erection time. It's something that the city will be able to point to and say, hey, this is a state of the art structural system that is really very much favored by owners these days and also architects. And I think that's going to be something really innovative, which will bring some real new innovation to the building. And on the program side, we deleted some storage rooms that we're, that could be, that really should go elsewhere in the park. Revised the second floor plan. Increase, improve the storage at fitness and game room. Staff felt that there, we could economize on staff areas, so we actually allowed them to do that. And then it turns out the schematic design had two movable partitions in the community room. It turns out one creates two better sized rooms and for rental. And so we actually made that change also. Next. Another key feature of their proposal is, is at no extra cost, within the fixed price, they gave us what's called a dual duct VAV system. This is a much more cost, much more energy efficient system. It allows more than twice the number of zones and controls. So you can really fine tune the, the comfort level of all the different spaces. And over, over time will really result in a lower energy cost to the city. In addition, part of their strategy was this system has fewer rooftop units. And that, along with the roof, the way they redesigned the roof, will allow the city to install solar panel system on the roof. We don't have any out in the parking lot or anything else that will provide a net zero building. What that means is that the solar panel system on the roof will provide all the energy to, to power the building, which is a really big deal. It's one of the, 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 it's really sort of the, the, the sort of zenith of sustainable features in buildings these days. So that was a really strategic design change they made, that we'll look a little bit later. A couple other things down the list. I won't go through all of these. There are some other changes we allowed them to make to really improve things. One thing at the very bottom, they actually were to upgrade with a canopy and preschool entry and stone at the, at the west elevation, which were not, which was not in the schematic design, which really dresses up the building. We'll see that in a minute. Next. Now, what we did, I did mention before that there were additive alternates, which were not included. We asked them to do this, is if they're, we asked them to, as a strategic part of their proposal, if there are things you can't fit in the fixed price, what would those be? And block of the three really gave us the most thoughtful list of these things. And there are only two items on here that we'll actually have to use contingencies to pay for. And that is the community room movable, movable partition and acoustic ceiling treatments. And the reason for that is they weren't designed enough in schematic design, so it was really hard for us to kind of figure out what they were to be. And there are many options for these, and so we'll be taking a look at those two items as we proceed with the design builder. And then we'll go ahead and bring back to council a price for each of those items based on the Subcommittee's choice of that option. And again, that's a, we budgeted dollars for that. We just didn't include it in because it really hasn't been designed enough. The other items on here are all things that block feels and we agree can be procured independently by the city through vendors and not need to pay the markups to the, to the design builder. That, you know, it results in about a 15% savings. So we can basically get these items for less if we procure them directly. And again, we use those contingency dollars and some of our FFE dollars in the budget to pay for those. And real quick, those are things like the lobby reception desk, which can be a piece of furniture, the emergency ready responder communication system, the ERRCS, which we can go through a vendor and have them install that, that equipment and cabling. Kitchen equipment, we can certainly get kitchen equipment. We can look at options for procuring those directly rather than have the contractor procure them. And also cabling for low voltage systems, teledata AV security and have those done by the, the, the equipment suppliers rather than the contractor. So they strategically said, hey, you know, you can get these, you can get these items less expensively by procuring them directly. So they said, well, we don't, rather than paying us in our market, why don't you buy them direct? So those were not included either. And again, we've got dollars in the budget to procure those items. And finally, one thing that we, we took out is the, the RFP had not asked for LEED certification. If you're familiar with that, that's Leadership and Energy and Environmental Design. It's a certification. That about 10 years ago, you saw a lot of buildings with this. And the thing is that we have, we'll have a net zero building, which is far more sustainable than kind of a LEED building. And also with Cal Green, as Tom mentioned, the state of California's building code provide really requires a LEED silver, which is the medium certification level anyway by code. So in California, a lot of public owners are not going with LEED certification. And so we were able to kind of save $100,000 to not do that. We could do it later. But the design build team and the Subcommittee felt that some, with some really nice displays in the entry lobby, we can play up the truly sustainable features of the building, which a lot of people had, they felt has, has more value than just a LEED plaque. So we decided to take that out too. So these are all adjustments we made to the, the contract sum for these reasons. I have a lot of detail. I'll entertain questions on any of these items. But it really, again, at the end of the day, this really provide, will get us the best, most bang for the buck for the project and still stay within the overall $30 million budget. Next. So just real quick, some of the features you'll see, this is the site plan. It's very familiar. You see the plan is really about the same as schematic design. You'll see one key added feature is the arrival court. So that drop off, that oval shaped drop off is really an improvement over the schematic design, where it's really a nice feature, an oval feature. You'll see the pathway across the north edge of the building, that pathway that leads to the preschool play yard. That was a really great innovation because before, if you remember, schematic design had a drop off on Lincoln Circle. So cars would queue along Lincoln across from housing there and really kind of, you know, be a bit disruptive to those neighbors. And then the preschool, the kids would have to walk up a, quite a steep stairway to the preschool play yard. This scheme allows them to drive to the arrival court, drop their kids off or walk them into the preschool right from the curb along a flat path to the preschool play yard. It was really a key improvement to the schematic design. And also you can't really tell from this, but there are 26 trees that we are not cutting down, which are the ones you see kind of along Lincoln and of the, by the community room and by the tennis courts. So we have mature trees we'll keep rather than cutting them down and planting new trees. And then there's more soft scape. There's more planted area and less concrete while still providing the same program area for the community room, event terrace and the antro plaza. So it really cleans up that design and provides a greener, if you will, landscape plan. Next. Site plan, you'll notice this is almost exactly like schematic design, not a big difference. The only thing you'll see in the community room, there's one partition instead of two. And that really, the, the, the information that city staff had is that that's really, those are more rentable than three small rooms. So that's, that's really, but everything else here is really the same. It's really not very different from the schematic design. So this, this floor did not change much. There are a few program areas and some tweaks, but not very, not there very much. And then going up to the second floor. The second floor is where we had some changes. Now, one of the things is the schematic design. The second floor is where we had some changes. Now, one of the things is the schematic design that was approved by council had a very complex second floor roof system. It had lots of small roofs and sloped roofs and kind of bits and pieces. They were very expensive to build, really caused some expensive structural costs. But also importantly, didn't really allow for maximizing use of the roof for solar panels on the roof. So this plan is a bit different, really consolidates the plan into a more, kind of a simpler plan. The south edge, the senior center, the conference room, those are really the same. I just want to point, there's one thing on this plan, that the balcony outside the senior lounge that overlooks the lobby is included. It just wasn't shown on this drawing, so that's, that is included, but it's just, it's just not shown in this rendering. And then the classrooms and art classroom are a little bit different from where they were before, but it allows a little more flexibility in that space. One last, one comment on the program area is they're giving us the exact same overall program square footage as the schematic design had, with a few of the changes made during the RFP. Some rooms are larger, some smaller, so we'll be adjusting those as we proceed further into design. But they are giving us all the key program spaces. The sum total of those are the same as in the schematic design. So we're getting the same program basically for $3 million less. So it really was, that's a big, I think, a huge feature of the project. Next. So structure, you can see on the left here, on the right also, this is the CLT system. So you can see that the, instead of a concrete floor slab, those are laminated wood panels. And they, along with a steel structure, this meets all fire incisor codes, which is obviously, we wouldn't, we would not have anything that would not meet those. Yet it really gives you a wood ceiling look, which is what the schematic design had, but it didn't actually have wood. It had metal panels that looked like wood. This is real wood. And also they're very sustainable. So it's really, it's a recyclable project, product. The steel is recycled steel. The CLT comes from sustainably harvested wood. And it really gives you a kind of a really cool, modern sort of tech look, but very warm. On the right, you'll see that's a library that has this system. It shows kind of a finished product. You'll see the steel, you see the wood ceiling above. Those are some acoustic elements. I don't know that we'll have the same ones that look like that, but it kind of shows you how you get the wood ceiling throughout and some light pictures and painted steel elements coming down. But it's something that the subcommittee, this aesthetic, the subcommittee and staff really like this. And it's really an innovative, it really is a new techno, proven, new but proven technology that's been used much more in the last five to seven years. Next. So this, this diagram kind of highlights the sustainability and resiliency of the project. You'll notice that, again, you'll see on the roof, we have, the roof is a much more simple and straightforward plan. So it allows us to have solar panels that will, again, provide all the energy for the building. There are some other features here that you'll see here, but the two main things are, again, that HVAC system, which will greatly reduce energy costs, and then solar panels on the roof. So this team really focused on energy use and life cycle costing and low life cycle cost to the city. Next. So this diagram shows just what they did. So on the left hand side is the schematic design that shows all the rooftop units. And the orange area was the area that was available for solar panels, really kind of an issue. On the right, you can see what they're giving us, the dual VAV system allows fewer rooftop units. Therefore, there's more room for solar panels. And you can see just how much. It's really about twice as much square footage, which allows to put all the solar panels on the roof and provide a net zero building. Next. And here's a diagram that shows those solar panels. You can see how extensive they are on the roof, which really is a key design feature. Next. So here the renderings, you'll see that they're really not very different from schematic design. In fact, they're really, that was not the, the goal here was to give us, give the city the same aesthetic, in fact, an improved aesthetic for less cost. That was our, that was our, that was really what our goal was. You'll see here that this is the lobby lounge, which is very much similar to the schematic design. You'll notice that the ceiling there, that's wood, that's natural wood and steel beams. The schematic design did not have that feature. And so we have natural wood ceilings and eaves throughout the entire project, which really add a warmth and really, I think, make the most to express the schematic design. So that really was something that the subcommittee and staff really appreciated. Next. This shows that enhanced drop off area, that oval drive. Now, you'll see that large Millbrae sign. That's not included because there was some debate about whether that was the signage that we wanted to have. So at the end of the day, we kind of said, well, we'll do, we'll do our signage. We'll kind of have a signage discussion moving forward. But in the schematic design, there was, they didn't, there wasn't the stone and trellis you see here. They added that as an enhancement at no additional cost. That includes a trellis along there, some stone that takes, really kind of makes, this, this is the front door of the building, so it doesn't look like a side door. And you'll see the pathway to the preschool right there, which is really much better than to walk into the stairway from Lincoln. It has a gateway you'll see there with a nice stone pillar and a place for kids and parents to stay in the rain and then walk, it provides a gateway to the preschool. So that was a really key design feature that was part of their proposal. Next. This is the daytime view looking towards the community room. You can see it's very similar to the schematic design. You'll see, you can kind of see that, that wood ceiling there with the metal beams. Again, the stone, which is the same as schematic design. And this, this shows, it's kind of hard to tell, but this, there's more soft landscape in here and less concrete than we had before, which is something that was really greatly appealed to the subcommittee and city staff. Next. And this is a nighttime view of the same view. So you can see the community room on the right and then the lobby on the left, which are very similar to the schematic design. Next. So this is a great, now this is a bird's eye view. You're not going to ever see this unless you're in a drone or way up on the top of the hill looking down. But you can see the roof, the second floor roof was greatly simplified to maximize area for solar panels. And that, that's what's allowing us, again, to provide a net zero building, which was not possible with the schematic design. Again, a key feature of the Block ELS design. Next. And this is the interior. You can again, see, this is a rendering, so you can see that, that, that natural wood. There will be some acoustic treatments. Again, we have not included those yet because we want to look at options. But this shows sort of the general look of the inside of the, of the large community room. Next. So here's an overview of our schedule. Again, ties contract award. The notice to proceed will go out before mid-September, perhaps a little earlier. We'll have a groundbreaking ceremony in September as schedules allow. It'll be a socially distanced groundbreaking, but we've had those lately, so we're pretty used to it now. Substantial completion in March of '22 and grand opening in June of '22. So just over about a year and a half from now, the building will be open for business. Next. So now I'll turn it back over to city staff to just discuss project financing.
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, before we get into the project financing, would you like to take questions on the architecture and the building itself? Or continue with the presentation and then have questions at the end?
I think we should take all the questions at the end. Okay. If you want to wrap up the presentation.
Okay. So, thanks, John. So the project cost, you know, as we had mentioned, the design build contract amount with the Block ELS team, $24,500,000. We have a 6% contingency. That total is $1.47 million. The total cost for the design build, including the construction contingency, is $25,970,000. Plus, we have that $200,000 stipend in there that we agreed upon. The council adopted to just allocate the funding back when the RFP process and design build process was directed. So we have the 25.97. Then, as John had mentioned, there are several items outside of the design build that we can save about 15% by going direct. And, and this is an itemized list of what those are. So the added alternatives for technology cabling, equipment and kitchen appliances is $450,000. The furniture fixtures and equipment, known as FFNE, is $800,000. Moving expenses, we plugged in $20,000. And then soft costs, which includes the special inspections such as soils and structural and those things that the city will provide. Building commissioning, which is the walk through the building and how everything works and operates independently. Utilities through the, through the development of the project. Legal costs, miscellaneous project costs, a little over $700,000. We added a project contingency of 1% to those soft costs and procurement outside of the design build scope. So when we add everything up, that's $1.975 million for the grand total of $28,415,000. So what do we have in the bank, right? So we're calling that secured funding for the project. We currently have available the allocation of the land sale of the city parcel to Bart. That was a $2.25 million land sale. We have $1,050,000 remaining. Park impact fees that we've collected to date, $7.6 billion. We have a developer contribution that was a community benefit for one of our projects, TOD2. That amount is $2.88 million. And then we have donations currently right now, as we work with the Millbrae Community Foundation, of $195,550. So total secured funding in the bank is $11.7 million. We also have a remaining insurance allocation that based on the insurance policy, once we occupy the building, then they will cut us a check the day we occupy it for $1,794,000. Also, as if you recall, the city council approved the preschool agreement with a licensed preschool operator, which is Millbrae Montessori, in the amount of $1.4 billion. Now, that's over a 10-year period, so this helps our cash flow. And that $1,467,210 is the present value. There is a 3% escalation in that lease, so this actual present value will grow over that 10-year period of time. But this is today's, this is that present value that we're using for the, for the funding. So total secured funding in the future under the preschool partnership, lease revenue and the remaining insurance allocation is $3.2 million. So that brings us to total secured funding of 15, a little over $15 million. Now, if you go to the bottom of that Excel spreadsheet table, as I mentioned, the grand total cost is $28.4 million. We have total secured funding of $15 million. The remaining amount to be financed is $13.4 million. As I mentioned, and as you all know, we went to the voters for the $12 million G O bond. Again, 62% of the voters said yes, 38% no. But this being an important project and staying the course to deliver this, this community asset, we've really looked at ways that we could finance the project. So what we're recommending is that we have a loan against our enterprise funds and impact fees of $9.9 million. We also have the sale pending of the three surplus properties that we have estimated at $3.5 million. That brings us to the $13.4 million needed. Now, as an alternative, as the council knows, we were working with the county on a lease leaseback, and they had agreed to fund and provide a loan to us at 2.5% interest at $14 million. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, the chief executive officer, Mike Callagie at the county, asked, you know, based on, on all the discussions, if they could defer that for one and a half to two years. So of course, moving in a different direction to secure funding in a different way, we've done that. But we still have that possibility in the next year and a half to two years to refund, in essence, what we're lending the project, refund it to use the county loan. And then we, depending on tonight's decision, once we do have a real project in it to go, we want to start a very robust and aggressive donation and fundraiser program to add to that almost $200,000 that we have with the Millbrae Community Foundation. So our financing strategy, so under the law, legal authority allows municipalities to invest in themselves. And this is a tool that's utilized by many cities for projects such as community centers. I've used it in my career on two different projects in two different cities, one for a library and one for a senior center. The total enterprise fund balance, our water and sewer enterprise fund balance, as of today, is $19.2 million. That includes the required reserves. The third bullet of the fund balance, we would otherwise invest these funds in the city's portfolio. The city's portfolio includes local agency investment funds, county pool, treasuries, other, other investment tools that we have afforded to us as a municipality. This figure in 1920, the net sewer and water enterprise fund portfolio investment, money that we are not using, but we would invest is $11.6 million. So we have $11.6 million that we would otherwise invest in lead funds and the county pool. So as I mentioned, legal authority allows municipalities to invest in ourselves. This is a, this is a funding mechanism that we are proposing, recommending to invest 6.4 million of that $11.6 million in our city project. That leaves 5.2 million that we would invest in our portfolio. This is important because I want the council to know and the public to know, this is money we would otherwise invest. We're not depleting the total investment pool of funds. And this is a very sound strategy to loan ourselves and invest in a city project using our enterprise funds and our investment tools that are afforded to us. So future funding for the loan repayment, our annual debt service payments on lending ourselves this money from the enterprise fund and development, is at $9.9 million. The interest rate, the market interest rate, and we've checked this with the legal counsel at Jones Hall, who's our bond counsel and FAs, that the market rate interest for a seven-year loan is 1.64%. So the annual debt service on that loan is 1.522 million. Now, just as we have various funding sources that we could loan ourselves and invest in ourselves, we also have those funding sources as collateral that we will pay back, and there are several variables. What is the future recreation service impact fees? If you recall, there's two different fees in the fee schedule that the council adopted earlier this year. Future recreation service fees that are earmarked specifically for this project for future development is $6 million. Other development impact fees that include park impact fees, we are very conservatively estimating anywhere from five to $16 million in that, in that revenue. This is based on future office buildings that have been approved, residential that's been approved and projects that are in the pipeline. We also have future insurance proceeds that are under review that we continue to deal with the insurance company. We're estimating that's going to fall on the low side of $200,000 and on the high side of an additional $1 million. We also have the sale of the portable recreation center. That's valued very conservatively at $500,000. Annual property tax increases, including new development that is, is under construction and pending, is estimated at $750,000. Again, this is a very conservative number. We're with Mike Sung, our finance director. We also have future annual TOT growth. There's two new hotels, as you know, in TOD2 that's one under construction. There's also a project in the pipeline that just completed its CEQA review that we hope will break around and could potentially open their doors before the hotel that's under construction, actually at TOD2. So with that, we're estimating those two new hotels will generate $1 million. Now, this is net of one hotel that may be taken offline. So again, this is a very conservative estimate. The average TOT per hotel is about $1.2 million a year in the city of Millbrae. And then we also have a current general fund balance, not including reserves, of $12 million. So with this source of funds, you know, we wanted to talk a little bit about any, any loan, right? That there's risk involved and really want the council to know. And I've been dealing with Mike Conner and, you know, our city attorney and our city attorney Joe Kastman, and they may, they may have some things that they want to weigh in here as well. But the risk, really, the way we have this is market absorption and the pace of new development. And that's the key, because we do have now an adopted fee structure for new development. And that is what we are really banking on, that growth will occur, redevelopment will occur in the city. And we now have the tools, the new development will pay its fair share. But there is risk associated with that. So why proceed with the financing strategy now, right? We've got $12 million in general fund reserve. You know, why not use that? Well, we can use that money for additional reserves. We can use that as a for additional reserves. We can use that as a rainy day fund. We can use our money wisely in in different areas. We can also transfer some of that twelve million as the council adopted our capital improvement program uh for street repairs, pothole repairs, um that type of thing. And the first bullet, market interest rates are extremely low, one point six four percent over seven years. In total, over the seven year term, that's six hundred and sixty six thousand dollars in interest that we would pay versus the second bullet. If we wait, we know construction cost increases are at five percent, and we think that's conservative. If you recall, group four and some of the estimates were as high as ten percent. So between seven and ten percent, we we just ran this at five percent. If we wait one year, five percent increase on thirty million dollars is one point five million in additional cost. Two years, it's three point, little over three million in two years. In three years, it's four point seven million dollars. So the longer we wait, the less affordable this reality becomes. It just makes so much sense to use the funds that we have to invest in ourselves and and not wait. Also, in economics, delivering the project on an expedited basis for the public enjoyment sooner rather than later has some great tangible and intangible value to it. So I will now hand it over to um our project manager, who's done an extraordinary job, Jane Cow, to go over some of the project labor agreement highlights.
Good evening, Mayor Vice Mayor, Member of City Council. Um so this um action recommended uh recommend recommended action for the city council is to approve uh a project labor agreement. Uh this labor agreement will be with the San Mateo County Building and Construction Trades Council. Uh the reason why we want to have this is it will promote efficiency of construction for the city. It will provide for peaceful settlement of labor dispute and grievances without strikes or lockouts, will also promote public interest in assuring the timely completion of the project. And really, this is to avoid increased costs resulting from delays in construction. Uh also skilled workers represented by local unions uh that will increase the safety of construction project as well as quality of the completed work. Thank you. Next slide. So um to wrap this presentation up, what we're, the recommendation for city council action is the award of a design build contract to block construction in the amount of twenty four five point five million dollars for the Millbrae Recreation Center project and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and all contract change orders up to the project contingency of one point four seven million dollars, approve the use of project labor agreement and also approve stipend to proposers not selected for the project.
And that, Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation, and we'd be happy to now open it up for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, uh city manager to Ms. Cow and uh Mr. Baker and everyone who has been involved on this project. This has been uh a long time coming. Just over four years ago, we had the the fire that burned down um recreation center, and we've had um you know, tons of community input over that time. A lot of hard work has gone into this, and uh it's very exciting to be here um at this time to now have an opportunity uh to move ahead and and see a light at the end of the tunnel here. Um so with that, we will start with uh questions from the council, and it looks like the first hand we have up is um Mike Conneran, uh legal counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. I I just want to make a couple of quick comments on the financing. Um first of all, uh not everyone out there may understand what uh the connection fees are that are that are deposited in our enterprise fund. So these are payments made by uh people connecting new connections to our water and sewer systems. Um they have nothing to do with water rates. Uh the balance, this use of money will have no effect on water rates. Um this is capital money that is collected whenever the development occurs and then is spent over years as the city finds more projects to do to improve, repair uh the water and sewer system. So essentially, this is money that is invested. It's invested either in other instruments, the local agency investment fund, or with the county San Mateo. Uh and so this financing strategy simply takes that money and instead invests it in a loan basically to the city itself to pay for the uh community center. Um and I just, just another couple of comments about risk. I mean, obviously, the city bond measure did not pass. You do not have a a balance in your account to just simply pay for this project. So you are you are taking out a loan. Um loans have to be repaid. And uh what the city manager has laid out for you are the different air ways in which he believes there's funding to repay those loans. And it's just, I think our concern is just that, you know, that loan will need to be repaid because those monies were paid by developers' tax upon the city water and sewer system. Um so th- that's all. We've worked with the with the city manager and gone over these various uh mechanisms, and I think some are certainly more uh able to come through than others, but I think you just need to feel comfortable that there's enough uh uh security that those numbers are, that those amounts are going to come through, and I think it would probably take a significant economic uh problem for them not to, but that you're just comfortable with making that choice. Uh and I, you know, I gave the the analogy to the to the city manager earlier today. You know, it's like buying a car. If you don't have the money to buy a car, you buy a car and you take out a loan. Um you you get the car right then, so you can use the car, and the city would certainly get the benefit of having the community center. Um but you need to pay that loan. Uh now the the, nobody's going to cut the community center, but uh you you just need to feel comfortable, and and it's not so much that you wouldn't be able to pay the loan, but but i- if they're really bad economic times, you might have to make cuts elsewhere in order to keep up those payments, but uh that's all. I just wanted to make sure you were fully aware of those of the of that that exposure and just felt comfortable with taking that.
Okay, thank you very much uh for that clarification, Mr. Conneran, and of course, you know, as as we assuming we take out the loan and and are able to pay it back, we would prefer to do that with um impact fees or other types of sources besides the general fund. I know several of these uh funding sources listed here are general fund. Um but ideally, those would be used for, you know, capital improvements and and service enhancements around the city um as opposed to uh debt service, but it is a a possible funding source if needed. Okay, um let's go to uh Councilman Oliva.
Thank you. Um I have a question with regard to the county um commitment that might come about in the next one and a half to two years. If if in fact we um have our own financing in place, would they be able, will we still be able to revisit the opportunity for that?
Yes, and Councilmember Oliva, that's a great question. Um yes, we we can, and what we would do is basically it would be a refunding or we we refinancing. Um and and again, our legal counsel might want to weigh in here, uh Mr. Mike Conneran, but we can't obviously have two loans out on the same building or the same project. So we would go to the county with a refunding, and the benefit of that is is it frees up money that we're lending ourselves, right? That we that we could
Right.
now now do other things. But but with that, I want to make sure that the council and the community understands that the money that we're using to lend ourselves is not earmarked for any current C I P project. So that's why these balances and and the difference that we went through of total funding versus net funding um i- is is so critical. So the net funding is what we're using and investing, and we're lending ourselves, so.
I love how you said that, because that's kind of like my question. Um for the county to renig on the opportunity for Millbrae to uh have this this loan, what was this attached to in the county? It, because I don't think that COVID had taken anything that this was already attached to.
Yeah, so so on the lease, it it would be under a lease leaseback scenario. There's there's some legal things that 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 have to do with the GAN limit and some other things that um ultimately, ultimately, if we would default on the loan, the county would own the community center, the recreation center.
That's what Andy asked. Maybe I'm not making myself clear enough here. Um let me try one more time. We, the the county was was going to help us out here with the loan. What was that money that they were going to take out of the county attached to? Because, I mean, it I, we all, we all know we're in tough times with COVID and such. But was this money they were going to lend us attached to something that they've already used in these bad times, or?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. No, so I understand. No, it was it was going to come from their general fund. So so the county's budget right now is a hundred and five million dollars shortfall. And and so with that hundred and five million dollars, that's where, you know, as as all government agencies and everybody actually is is managing through this pandemic. Um yeah, so their money was was general fund money that they were going to lend to us uh and be.
So as we all heal, the they might loosen up on their funds and feel more confident to allow for us to go back to them at at a at a point.
That's correct. That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, um let's go to uh Vice Mayor Schneider.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I've got a question. I have some questions that would probably be best addressed to Mr. Baker from Swin- Swinerton based on the staff report. I've got a couple of comments on attachment to which were the drawings, and then um I found a fuck couple of discrepancies or um things that are missing from the actual contract. How would you like to handle that?
Um why don't you go in that order as
Okay.
as you just uh.
So forgive me, council members, because I'm not on the subcommittee. I couldn't have addressed these under subcommittee. But I do want to thank Mr. Baker and staff for meeting with me individually last week where we went over most everything. So some of my comments are just additions to that, and some are so that the public who I hope are watching on M C T V, since there's only thirty seven participants in the chat room, um that they have a better understanding of why I support all of the recommendations tonight. Um so starting with that, I first want to say thank you to all three sets of proposers and to Swinerton. Uh what it, what was explained to me is that we are also giving two hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars each to the two applicants that we did not choose. But there's a really good reason for it. Each of those applicants had additional ideas that the city now owns and that are contributing to making the rec center a better building. So I I I want to say thank you to all three applicants for the process and for Swinerton running through that process. I am very happy to support that expenditure of two hundred thousand dollars. Otherwise, in the beginning, I go, what are we doing that for? But it makes good sense, and we own these additional design concepts. So thank you for that. Um I have a, and I think most of these are for Mr. Baker. I think they're pretty quick, Mr. Baker. If you can just give me a yes, no, then we can get through this. Can we do that?
Sure.
Great. Okay, my first one, um the HVAC system, I'm all for it, great idea. Part of the problem with all opening cooling centers during this recent set of double disasters, heat waves and now smoke is not all HVAC systems can do a good job of clearing out particulates. Can this new HVAC system, as we now enter the new normal of seasonal heavy smoke, be able to to clean out the air enough that we can send people with respiratory problems to this building?
Yes, in fact, it's more than just that. Also, part of their presentation was um it is a far, it it filters air at a far higher level than a regular system, which in the age of COVID, the mechanical engineer says is kind of the new state of the art for that system. So the filtration system is is significantly greater and more fine, if you will, than the uh the schematic design. So it's a definitely enhancement over that system. Um I, but so because of that discussion, we did not have the smoke discussion specifically with the engineers, but knowing these systems, that filtration system also um really helps um to guard against um uh smoke infiltration in buildings as well.
You've made me very, very happy, and I'll be so happy to report that to the emergency services council. And for block, who I I'm assuming are some of the names on the list, we are also affected by ultrafine particulates from the airport. So just throwing that idea out there as you design that HVAC system, but I'm a happy camper for that. Thank you. Okay, really quickly, um I don't know what um hold on, I'm I'm looking for my notes here. The removal of trees, this is more for the public, an advantage to the public, so that we understand that we're moving into an age where the city is going to be responsible for removing carbon from the atmosphere. Hanging on to existing trees will absorb more carbon than planting a brand new tree. So that's a double win for us. So again, thank you for that. The large specimen tree, I I have here one of the maps. I think the large specimen tree is the one that's going to go in the roundabout in the front of the building.
Actually, it it goes, you can see it, it goes by the entry. It's it's to the right of this picture. Um if you go, if you go um that that uh it's right, it's actually right where my cursor, oh, you can't see that. Go go back to the rendering. Go to the site plan. See it right there. Actually, you can see the um um the the tree in particular is where it says Central Corner Fitness Terrace.
Oh, that.
That is a landscape feature is that tree right there. Yeah.
Okay, so um Mr. Baker and staff and I spoke about this. If we've now moved to a thirty six inch box, if you could tell us what it would cost to get a bigger tree, we as a community can fundraise for that. So there's still that opportunity to get a really fabulous tree from the get go and not wait the twenty years or so it might take. So um what I was told at our one on one meeting is that staff that um Acting Director Jane Cow is keeping a list of these things so that we can go back to the community, go back to the community groups and say, if we want a bigger tree, we need to raise another twenty thousand or thirty thousand or whatever that amount might be. So um hopefully, we will still get that that big specimen tree. I see the other big specimen tree in the arrival court too. So maybe that's something else we don't have to take up tonight, but opportunities.
Yes.
Um I have a request, uh because I'm not the liaison to the Park and Rec Commission, but I have been bringing this up for five years. The school district uses the parking lot at the rec center for students to be dropped off at Taylor, and that causes a big backlog under the old rec center. We now have the schools, obviously, are not bringing a lot of students in, but I would like to ask that the city council direct to Park and Rec or some other committee to work with the district for a transportation demand management program so that during construction and during operations, they stop using that parking lot as a student drop off. It doesn't make sense. It makes it really hard, for example, for seniors to get out of the building. The two programs happened at the same time. So we have this two year window or however long students aren't back at Taylor to get a transportation demand management plan at at Taylor and the elementary schools. Um so I I don't want to make that, I really actually would love to make it a contingent for approval because we've talked about this for four years. I'm not on the city count or the school subcommittee, but we really need to get these things in place so that when the building opens, we're ready to go. And seniors were at risk by the parents picking up and dropping off their kids. And we need to remove that risk. Okay. Um that white trial list that you showed in the picture of a a pre, an already built library, is that approved? Are we approving that as a sound, or was that just an example?
No, that's a, that's a great question. It's an example. In fact, it's exactly why we took the acoustic treatment as something not yet determined. We want to see what those options are. And so that is for another project with the same structural system, but uh we we looked at a ver- a variety of acoustic treatments, and there's a lot of uncertainty and disagreement. So we're we're, one of our first things is going to be looking at those, what those options are. So that's, that is not included. That's one of the options that we will have, but we will uh take these options to the subcommittee and um staff and perhaps council, if that's something that the council wants to do to show really what the options are and what the selection will be ultimately.
I would prefer seeing those come back to council when you're ready, but thank you for that. Um what is a mat foundation?
A mat foundation is a really big thick slab. So what it is, is it's a, it's, you know, it'll be two to three feet deep. It's a very monolithic slab. It's got good seismic uh qualities. Um the soil here allows that. But um that's very common. It's a very common foundation system for a two story building.
And we don't have highly expansive soils there.
Not on this site. In fact, the 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 city actually went and had did a a supplementary geo- supplementary geotechnical study last fall, um which was quite more in depth than the original one, and allowed for uh uh more options in foundation systems.
Okay.
Again, while still, while still, yeah, wh- while still complying with with all codes and um seismic seismic codes and also geotechnical uh studies that were done on the site.
Okay, um you and I talked about this. I'm on a state, we're state commission for recycling market development, and new codes are going to be coming out based on, for example, concrete and G H G that I think goes into effect next year. It's designed to actually thin the layers of concrete because so much G H G is generated by that. So I'm open for it. I'm just throwing that out there. If how soon it will get into the building codes, I don't know. But I have a house in Mountain View that was built on flat slab on expansive soil. It now has seven hydraulic jacks and it had to be stitched re-together. So I'll be watching as we build this. Just make sure we have controls on that.
Yeah.
The cross laminated wood material, is it using formaldehyde or a non-toxic binder?
No, no, it, it comes from, it's FSC, it's, it's sustainable harvested timber. It's, it's a highly sustainable material. It's, I, you know, I, I don't know the exact, I, I believe that adhesives are, are largely organic. It, it, it's, 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 it actually, it's use grew out of the desire to have something more sustainable than a concrete slab. And so I, I could get you specification information on that, but that, it's, yeah.
A lot of this is for the public. Formaldehyde makes indoor air quality really bad. So as long as we're going with a non- formaldehyde product, then we're getting good indoor air quality. And can you tell the public what FSC is? I know what it is, but.
You know, it's funny, it's forest.
It's Forest Scientific Certification Program.
Sort of certification. This is what I, yes, FSC.
Yeah. And it's designed to make sure that our green products meet high levels and we're sustainably foresting. So again, that's another green attribute. So even if we don't go for lead, we are qualifying for that by using those.
Yeah, correct, correct.
New flat roofs, given that I was in support of the lantern, so I'm giving up the lantern. The flat roofs, again, you and I have talked about how to drain these flat roofs and how we might get that water instead of entering into the storm drain system, entering into swales. Have you considered that or will that come in the next phase of design?
In fact, actually, if, if, if you can go to that, that section, the sustainability section, which I think is.
I'll come to that in the contract. If it's in there, I'm happy. I just would like to keep the water on.
We're already, we're already looking at that option of doing a cistern. So that's, and we're going to get pricing for that too. We can add that to the project.
For the rest of council, we discussed that on my one-on-one. There, if there's any possibility of getting grant funding for that system, we can collect our own rainwater. We're not putting it in the storm drains. We're not contributing to the flooding of our neighborhoods that are on the other side of El Camino Real. So it's a win-win if we can get it. And I'm so happy that you guys are, that Block and, and Swinerton are open and looking at that. So I'm actually really happy about everything here. I just want a few other questions. Oh, you talk about replacing walk-off metal grills with mats. I don't know what that means.
So the, it, it's, it's a bit of a, a detail, but the, both the entryways had a metal grill with a drainage system underneath it.
Dirt.
And for that, and, and it's, it's kind of a high-end thing you see in office buildings. The problem is with maintenance though, because if they're not maintained, they silt up, they're difficult to clean. They also can be a tripping hazard, especially for older persons.
And heels.
So, but most of, so most public entities now do, will do like a, a, a washable removal mat, which is a more, as a more friction, a better friction for walking, can be cleaned, can be, it, it, it's, 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 most folks think it's a better choice for maintenance.
Okay, great. That's great. You already talked about groundbreaking. You already talked about, because we talked about it, we don't need a lead sign. If the community knows, generally, we want to be shown as green as we are and it becomes bragging rights city by city. But to save that hundred thousand dollars and put it back in the building is just really good work on staff parts, on, on the develop, on the design builder and, and Mr. Baker. So I thank you for that. I'm perfectly happy giving up lead qualification. Take, I talked about that. I want to thank staff for coming up with what is a very clever way of funding this. I'm a former Hewlett Packard employee and I paid for grad school by borrowing against my own retirement account at Hewlett Packard. So to the public trying to understand this, this is basically paying ourselves back. So good work, staff, good work team for coming up with that clever way. Okay, couple of details. Tom, this might be for the city manager. I'm on page seven of the staff report where it talks about park impact fees. And it says that right now for the current funding of the project, it's seven million, six hundred and sixteen thousand and change. I asked this the last time, but I want this clear. I want it especially clear if Austin from the Daily Journal is listening tonight, that that does not include the developer fees we might have gotten from Sarah Station had high-speed rail not stopped that project. Is that correct or am I wrong?
No, correct. That does not include Sarah Station, also known as T E One Development. Those fees have yet to be paid.
And to the media, if you are watching us, when you have an outside entity that comes in and takes away a project that went through decades of approval, this is another way that it hurts the city of Millbrae and I want that on the record. Okay, back to good news stuff. The, the county was offering money for building preschools. I think they were trying to find preschool now. Any chance of us getting any of the county preschool money?
So I know Mackenzie Brady is one of our, our recreation director. She has submitted for several grants. Unfortunately, due to the competition, due to the demographic socioeconomics of the city of Millbrae, we, we did not receive those grants, but we're going to continue to try.
And I've got my ears open for any kind of recycling-related grants that could be coming forward. Cap and trade. I don't think any of this fits in cap and trade. I wish it would, but cap and trade has also taken a COVID hit. So problem on there. I'm almost done. So my last thing on the project labor agreement, for the public to understand this. Another advantage of a project labor agreement is the employees are going to be local, which means their salaries are turned right back into local retail, right back into local restaurant. It's a way of keeping the money here locally. It's one of the major reasons I support a PLA. I also think we're going to lose businesses to COVID. And I hope that the unions are looking at service employees who may need to be retrained and that we keep our eye on apprenticeship programs for any of our residents who have lost their jobs permanently. So with that, other than some, there's a major problem in the contract. It doesn't include onsite demolition, recycling and reuse discussion and quantifications or, or systems, nor does it include construction recycling in there that it talks about has waste and other things like that. My main concern in the contract is that is completely lacking. I know it's in the building codes. I know it's in Millbrae code, but this is my field. If it's not in the contract, I can't guarantee it'll happen.
So I can speak to that. Actually, Cal Green requires that and requires all the documentation during demolition and construction. And we, the, the, the building department needs, we'll need to see those manifests, et cetera. I mean, we'll be onsite also to monitor that. But those, the things you just, those, those are required by code now, which is why you don't see them in specs, but it's actually part of the Cal Green, the California Building Code.
So here's my problem is one of the early people that led the deconstruction movement in California and across the country. If you do not have any reuse built in, and now in the existing slab, there's nothing there to be reused except some plants. But there might be some material during construction that could be for reuse and that is not necessarily specified in Cal Green. Reuse, and, and I'll say this as a statewide commissioner, we're going to be bumping up reuse attributes. It probably wouldn't affect this project. It's going to take another two years. But if you can, to the degree possible, if you've got a ten-foot length two-by-four, that's a reuse. That's not a, a carve-up for mulch, as an example. And those are not in the green codes. So that, that's kind of my main on that, Ruben, our, our mayor, Hollibur. I have to pull out the contract, but thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Let's go to, let's see, are there any other comments from members of the council? Okay, Councilwoman Pappen?
I have a question.
Go to Councilwoman Pappen.
I'm glad, Councilmember Lee, please.
Okay, Councilwoman Lee, go ahead. You're on mute. Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of questions is, so I talked about the big slab wall. That was, if it's possible to relocate it, you know, the front entrance. And then also, I wanted to ask about the. Oh, Tom, can you show those pictures? I wanted to make a point that we, there's a possibility, if we can do as much open space in the building to provide for more diversity in organizing and also saving some costs. Here's, if we can do an open kitchen concept, Tom, if you can show some of those pictures I sent you. And then also I wanted to thank the subcommittee for all their work and staff and Mr. Baker and your staff. You guys did terrific work. Very much appreciated. Thank you to all our council members for their comments and diligence on this project. I'm looking forward to having it built out. I think most of my questions have already been answered. So the one other thing is the, is actually there's a big tree in the, in the, in the, in the preschool area. As much as I like the idea of a tree, I'm wondering if it's better used if we made smaller trees to allow more space for the kids to have more choices in, in their opportunity to play. Thank you.
And I can respond to that actually. Yeah, those, those are all great ideas. One of the, the, the big advantages of design-build is we're hiring an architect contractor team during the first few months when they, after the N T B S proceed. Well, we can explore those things. And the way it's set up is they can give us a probably, well, if we, if we do that, you know, the difference in price between four trees and one tree, to have some of the, the open kitchen idea, we can take a look at those and, and get pricey for those options and decide, sometimes though those great ideas will save dollars. But it's a great process that we're about to bark on, bark upon, that we can look at those options in a much more, much more efficient way than you do with a traditional job where you design it and bid it out. We have that flexibility with design-build. So we can look at all those ideas.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention, so Councilmember Lee has, has sent me some information. John Baker, I'll share that with you. But Councilmember Lee, I, I think, I mean, I, I think it's fantastic, the ideas that you had sent. And reversing the dry storage in the kitchen alcove here, I don't know if you can see my cursor, and the kitchen itself, I think is I, as John was saying, and ELS is very talented. Kind of an, an easy thing to do. And I think, you know, if we can do it, it, it provides great benefit. And so I will share those pictures and ideas.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Let's go to Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I really want to thank the subcommittee, Mayor Hollibur, Dr. Christopher Del Negro, Dan Quigg from Park and Rec, all the staff. And it was a pleasure working with everyone. And believe me, it was many, many hours here. And I want to thank the council, first and foremost as well, the entire council on the project labor agreement. It will, I believe personally, save us time and money moving forward here because it is local skilled work. And hopefully we can keep things moving very, very quickly here. One thing that, again, they left off was the walkway, walk-through from senior lounge. And I know this is not set in stone, but we had major discussions about that and certain things that group four left out, which were the, actually the north side of the building, walking around that side, there was somehow just not put into the design and not put out there. So I do appreciate all the work we had done in making sure that that walkway back to the childcare center is really taken care of in a safe manner. I know we did have discussions on the school drop off. I think a TDM costs an additional sixty thousand dollars. But we've been working with the school district and I think now we have a lot of time given COVID as to making the parking lot safe. It'll definitely be well-lit and have a greater flow moving forward. So hopefully we can improve access all around. Yeah, there's the back of the building there. And we have major discussions to try to keep everything going here. We're moving in a very, very exciting direction here. And I get the complication of the finance, but we are trying to keep everything on budget and move forward in a most efficient manner so that we can save money in the long run. I firmly believe this is a very, very important community building that will return synergy to our community and really bring people together there and hopefully become sustainable in and of itself. So looking forward to this groundbreaking coming up and are really our economic recovery. Because I do think this is going to be a big part of our economic recovery. It was a great meeting place when it existed back when. And I think it will return to our community in that way for special events and all kinds of community activities. So I am really looking forward to this. And I know we still have some fine tuning to do here. But it was a project, I think, of love and heartbreak for many of us. So again, I want to thank all the hard work and effort that the subcommittee really put in there. And I'm looking forward to this and input from the entire council as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for those comments, Councilwoman Pappen. And
Thank you.
Part of the, the beauty of the design-build process is that we can make some minor tweaks to the design as the construction team begins to mobilize and set the groundwork at the building. So it helps to, and to do that with dragging out the, the timeline of the project to keep it, actually, as, at an expedited timeline. So we look forward to continuing to work with Block and the ELS team and Swinerton and all of our staff here to, to move this along. All right, at this point, we will go to public communication. If you would like to make a comment, you can use the raised hand feature in Zoom. Anyone watching at home can also call in. The phone instructions are on the agenda posted on the website. So we will go first to James Rui Gomez.
Good evening, Mayor Hollibur, honorable city council members, hard-working city staff, hard-working city manager, Tom Williams. My name is James Rui Gomez. I'm here speaking on behalf of the San Mateo Building and Construction Trade Council, which represents twenty-four construction unions and sixteen thousand highly skilled men and women, hundreds of which live here in Millbrae. I would like to start out by thanking Jerry and Pat with your law firm for making the negotiations as smooth as possible. I'd like to thank Swinerton and Block for taking on this project and believing in the working family platform. I'd like to thank the subcommittee for believing in labor. And I'd like to thank the city council members for being true labor champions, for believing in the working family platform, just as all of our elected officials have the platform of safe schools, safe streets, good hospitals, affordable housing. Our working family platform is earn a decent wage that you could barely live on in this high-priced county. Healthcare for you and your family, so we're not relying on government subsidies. Funding our own retirement, our retirement money is recycled into the stock market into safe investments like municipal bonds. So that way our cities could borrow and rebuild the, our infrastructures. So it recycles that money and it's more important now in COVID than any time before. And the last component of our working families platform is we fund our own education. We fund one of the largest private-funded education systems in these United States, second only to the military, to ensure that we build the job right the first time, on time and on budget. By taking this project that was going to be done on a prevailing rate and sliding it to a PLA, which we have now renamed to a community workforce agreement, because that's what it is. It hires local contractors, local workers, local apprentices, returning veterans from the army, folks from underprivileged communities that have gone through a readiness program, apprenticeship readiness program, streamlining them into the working families. When we do that, we ensure that the prevailing wage dollars aren't getting sent out on the workers' checks as the whole amount. The, the healthcare, the wage, the retirement and the education. By doing it on a community workforce agreement, you get the wage and you separate it to where it's providing for more of these working families. Block and Swinerton and the city of Millbrae have just created hundreds of. have just created hundreds of good community jobs for construction workers that is desperately needed in this COVID 19 time of crisis and beyond. I want to congratulate you on all the work that you've done. It's been a long long road to get here. You guys have been very mindful of all the details and we are going to build a project that your community is going to be proud of. Thank you, Ruben. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. R. Gomez. All right, let's go next to Janet Fogarty, former Millbrae mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Holliver. I also wanted to thank the council and the committee for working so hard to to bring this this dream of what the community needs to fruition. I I also wanted to let the the public know that if they want to contribute to the project, particularly to the funding of the the furnitures, fixtures and equipment once the project is built. So things like you know, the kitchen appliances and the draperies and the coffee maker and the computers and the things that we're going to need to fill this this new building that they can contribute to the Millbrae Community Foundation. We have a special fund set aside for that and that their contributions will be to a 501(c)(3) and therefore tax deductible. So the Millbrae Community Foundation is working in partnership to the city to help make this happen. And if people are interested, they can go to millbreyfoundation.org and and to make their donation. Again, thank you very much for all of the hard work to make this happen. I think that the people of Millbrae are going to be very, very pleased to have something positive to look forward to after all of the the difficult times we've had through this year and and trying to restore this wonderful community asset to Millbrae. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Fogarty. All right, let's the next speaker is Joe Fitzgerald.
Good evening, Mayor Holliver, Vice Mayor Schneider and council members. My name is Joe Fitzgerald, Assistant Business Manager for the Electricians of I B W Local 617 in San Mateo County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Our members and their families, thank you for considering and approving the project labor agreement, also known as the Community Workforce Agreement for your REC Center coming up. The brothers and sisters of Local 617 Electricians look forward to this project and many more in partnership with the city of Millbrae. I'd also like to congratulate you specifically on achieving net zero for the new building. And that's pretty much it for the evening for me. So thank you again and have a safe rest of your evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fitzgerald. All right, the next speaker is Charlie Lavery.
Hi, I'm Charlie Lavery. I'm with the Operating Engineers Union Local 3. I'm also your neighbor. Our office is on Old Bay Shore, just across the Bill and Game border. And I want to thank the Mobile City Council and the contractors, everybody who involved in this project for their efforts and their recognition of the value of construction careers based around union training, partnerships and training programs that provide careers, not just jobs. And I'm happy to say a lot of our members live in Millbrae and they'll be able to benefit from this. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for their efforts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavery. All right, seeing no other public comments, public comment is closed. Let's see final comments from the council, Vice Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually the part of going through the contract itself. And I'm scanning it. I'll try to be really, really quick. On page five, there's a reference here to what's going underground. I'm assuming that we're going to get fiber optic as well as the ability to upgrade cabling when technology advances. It's not specific in the contract. On page seven, under certificate of compliance, it says it's going to be issued by San Mateo Central County Fire. That's going to be two years from now. I can't remember when we have to go back out to get permission from the public to get money for that. I'm a little nervous about making it specific when who knows if we'll still be with Central County Fire if we can't
Twenty twenty three. Or twenty twenty four, sorry.
Okay, so then we're okay for that one. There's a lot of reference to consultants and construction managers. I've been doing a very deep read on high speed rail in prep of our comments for high speed rails were E I R. And part of the problem they had, and it seems like one of the big problems that they had with the bridge that is collapsing in the Central Valley was many subcontractors and many other construction management contractors. When I read the contract in a couple of places, it it talks about the building inspector this or the the onsite manager. What and my question to staff then and to Block is what guarantee that we might have the same people throughout the duration of this project so that we don't lose that continuity? That seems to be one of the things that has plagued high speed rail. And it's it's in five or six different places in the contract. I can shoot it off to you tonight on a page reference.
I can speak to that latter thing. First off, in terms of fiber in the technical specifications, which are divisions two through sixteen, which were in the R F P, you'll see those specs for the for the for for data, including fiber. And so they're they are actually are included in the contract. Those are those are also contract documents. And in terms of consultants, one of the things that the contract has is that it you know, it we've asked for continuity of staff and also city and the city has the ability to approve staff if there are staff changes. So the way the contract is written, the intent is we have continuous staff. Were any consultants or the contractor or the design builder staff changes, the city needs to approve that. So there's an added safeguard to really guard against staff turnover and getting staff that's not of equivalent or better experience than the folks who would be leaving the project.
Can I put you on the spot and ask you, are you planning on staying with us?
Swinerton is staying all the way through the project. I can assure you of that.
Okay, thank you. We just don't want any high speed rail experiences. We have enough of them. This is more to the city manager and to the city. I'm on page fourteen. And it's all it's kind of spread out through section three dash two dash two dash two. There's a lot of work that's going to be happening and the public is going to be very curious. Some of these documents, I I don't think anything is considered proprietary, but I could be wrong. But can we develop a process that we have a website with the latest updates as soon as it's ready for public consumption? And we can help the public feel a part of the process?
Yes, because we we can work on that. We can also work on what's pretty popular nowadays are cameras out at the job site. So we'll work. Not only does it provide security, it also provides information to the public that they can log on and and view the construction progress. So yeah, we'll work with with John Swinerton and with Block and E L S.
Excellent. There's another question we're going to ask here. There's a whole section on taking photographs, but it doesn't mention whether Millbrae Community Television would be allowed access to sort of do a documentary of the construction. I don't know if that needs to be in the contract. If it does, I'd love to see it. If not, I'd just like to know that M C T V should they want to, and we pay them to to go in and document what is going to be the most significant public works project we've done in years.
Yeah, let us look into that because you know, when we have when we have when we have people on the job site, there's there's insurance issues and everything else.
I understand.
I understand what you're saying in terms of documentation.
Yeah.
But we'll look yet we'll we'll work with.
Yeah, it's it's section three point two point three point eight, page twenty is the section on there. And then here's another tricky one, but I'd rather get all of this yucky stuff out in front. I, of course, would love to see us buy American as much as possible. It's not actually written in the contract. I have a concern when we hear steel that we not go through the experience of the Bay Bridge, that wherever Block is purchasing materials, that we are not going to buy products that are going to fail. And it's not really written in the contract. I talked to the city manager before that. But in my world, it would be more specific regulations on purchasing and where we purchase and what we purchase. So if we can't get it in here, how can we ensure that we don't buy bad steel as an example?
Don, you want to take, I mean, there's
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. So yeah, there. So again, the the there is no of specific buy mark and clause in the contract, but in terms of quality and quality assurance, the there's going to be a couple of things. There will be a third party testing lab, which will inspect not just the installation with the fabrication of the steel. A third party, not part of the contractor that will work in tandem with the city's building department to make sure those inspections are taking place. And and we have a very robust set of performance specs in that are part of the contract documents, which will require those inspections.
So given the Salesforce building, which is now the new trans bay terminal, I believe, had the same problem in its I beams or H beams. Can we learn from that experience and not have that?
It that that, you know, that's a it's a very different
I know it's much bigger and much heavier.
Right. But again, there's there's other sets of quality assurance elements we have in the plan. We have the group, the group four engineers are in a peer review function on this project. They'll be reviewing all the submittals put forth and also the design. So not only do we have the building department reviewing for code compliance, we have the the design builders engineering team. We have a an added layer of quality assurance from the group four engineering team who will review those 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 designs and also the submittals that come through from the Block and E L S team.
Okay, and 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 I want to trust, but local experiences have taught us that it's our job to do the due diligence and to do the the oversight on this, even though you're doing the oversight. So city manager, I don't know if during these really critical parts, whether it's the pouring of the slab or the steelwork, that maybe we can just get a council update during that time and just let us know how things are going.
Yes, council, we're going to continue to have our monthly item on the city council meeting. So once a month, we'll be briefing the city council.
And honestly, I am almost done. I have one more. And Mr. Baker and I spoke about this. It's on the drawing this. I don't know if you can see on my picture, the drawing that shorters shows a daytime night time of the grass with the small plants. And I I am I am okay with simplifying our landscape, no problem. But I look at every time you have landscaping like that as an opportunity for slight grading to create a swale so that we are capturing rainwater and getting it back inside. And and because I'm assuming that Block is on the call, I just want them to hear from me. And I'm I'm looking at what I think is page twenty six, three point thirteen field engineering. I think that's the section in the contract. If we can consider these green areas all as opportunities for bioswells and a way to keep storm water on site. And make some pretty interesting. Sorry.
Yeah, so those are, I'm sorry, those are included in the design. It's just not shown on this plan, but that large green area near the community, that's a large bioswale. And I believe there's other, but we have bioswells to the west edge of the site for that exact reason. Not only just in in terms of complying with the state state of California C three requirements, but also just in the spirit of sustainability of the building. But we do have this in the project now. They're just not shown in these drawings.
Excellent. And and you and I talked about that, but I didn't know if the the rest of council was aware. And then I had one last question that came more from the diagrams, but looking at this site plan going to the far left, where you see the tennis courts and the existing parking lot and that area right there, right now, it looks horrible. There's a stairway up to Taylor. It's full of trash most of the time. Does any, I don't know where your staging area is going to be during construction, but are there any improvements the community might do hand in hand with our parks department? Or should it all wait until the construction is done? And I'm really talking about to the left, as you're looking at the diagram of the tennis courts, I walked out a month and a half ago, and I cannot tell you how much partying stuff I found. You know, it it just looks really grimy and horrible. But if it has to wait, I'm I'll just get I'll work with the public on how we might make that an adopt a spot.
Yeah, and also one of another kind of advantage of the design build process is we can tap, we can actually ask our design build team to design and price something. And if there's contingency or additional funding sources available, we can actually have the team in site add some of those elements, something that many of our other agency clients do when we have design build projects. It's really neat kind of opportunity to kind of augment parts of projects because you've got a team on site. So we can we can look into those things as well.
What everybody doesn't know is Mr. Baker and I, I'm, is that Mr. Woodbury trying to speak?
Yeah, this is James Woodbury, Block Construction.
Oh, hi.
Chime in. Nice to meet you as well. I just want to clarify all of that is new construction. So all of the parking lot and the stairway and pathway up to Taylor is all considered new and included in our contract. You're on mute. Sorry.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah.
We have a project that's going to be coming forward called Adopt a Spot. And it's a way to allow our public to become more involved in making Millbrae better. We have plenty of other areas to work on. We can wait until you're ready. I I thank you for this, Mr. Woodbury. I'm very excited. And thank you. I'm done, I believe, Mayor.
Very much, Vice Mayor Schneider. I will go ahead and make most to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Schneider. Oh, okay. Yes, Councilwoman Pappen.
Yeah, I just wanted to assure the vice mayor, we had the full discussions throughout this process on the bioswells and the many of the issues she already mentioned. So I'm sorry they weren't so explicit in the current plan, but we have definitely made sure those were in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for the vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we have a roll of vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
This is I.
Councilmember Pappen.
I.
Councilmember Alita.
I.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
I.
Mayor Holliver.
I.
Thank you. The adoption of the resolution with the following three action. Number one, awarded design contract to Block Construction, Inc. in the amount of 24 million 500,000 for the Millbrae Recreation Center restoration restoration project and authorized the city manager to execute the contract in a form approved by the city attorney and any necessary and warranted contract change orders up to the project contingency of 1,470,000. Number two, authorize the city manager to enter into a project labor agreement with the San Mateo County Building and Construction Trades Council for the project in a form approved by the city attorney. And number three, approve the payment of 100,000 stipend to each of the two proposers not selected for the project. Aggregate amount of 200,000 passed unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for everyone for hard work on this. Still have a ways to go. We can to break ground and hopefully have a groundbreaking ceremony sometime in the next couple of weeks. So we look forward to that and look to continuing to work with Block and E L S and Swinerton and and the TRS to bring this project to fruition. So with that, we'll adjourn our meeting. We will adjourn this evening in memory of Lorene Longtime Millbrae resident and the mother of Mark, our county secretary quarter and army clerk and election officer. Also been a little mayor. And she's also the mother, the husband, the wife of Marvin Church, is one of our early mayors and members here in Millbrae. He served in a number of unity organizations, the Women's Club, Mills Estate Women's Club, League of Women's Meadow Glen Amendment Club and Green Hill School P T A. Is active in the creation of the first Millbrae library in the 1960s. So we give her condolences to the church. And with that, we will adjourn and we will convene at our And with that, we will adjourn and we will convene at our next regular council meeting September 8th. Thank you very much and have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.